Please.
Thank you.
Blue in the room hit me right there.
It is 5:30 and we're going to call our meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Josh's excuse this evening, the rescue is elephant at work. But we'll call Cory.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
Kurt Cady, myself, Jamie.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
And Greg.
Yes.
Also present is members of fire department and ICP.
And over.
Discussion action items. A, discussion consideration and possible approval of conditional use permit request for new occupancy of an existing structure and associated parking lot for newly used automobile sales and service at South 9-1, West 2-2, 9-4-5 Milwaukee Avenue, Big Ben Motors. Is it Savas?
Yes.
Thank you. Franco?
Yes.
Whisman? Big Ben Village Parcel 211-1-012, Takski, Zerati's Land Enterprises LLC for the owner. Any other that you want to discuss?
Well, we went through this at planning pretty good and he seems to be making all the all the right conditions. I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I kind of echo that. Obviously, that business used to be something similar in the past, so I mean, it's not a significant difference from what Zerati had there originally and was successful, so.
They'll keep it up nice up there, so.
Any changes in the conditions or any additions, subtractions?
There is one thing just related to the fence, but they were, you know, that got talked through during planning at the end of the property there because of the residential. So there was some discussion around that, but that was really the only thing that needed to be discussed.
That thing's on the south side or the?
Uh, see, south side.
Okay.
Above that property. Just because of where the asphalt goes up and there's that guardrail. So it could be basically like a natural vegetation on the wall, arid areas or whatever, they, you know, put that there as a barrier.
Well, if everything went well at planning and was approved at planning, I will make the motion to approve the conditional use permit request for Big Ben Motors.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
So now a question about the paperwork.
Can he get something signed?
Yeah, I think he's going to need to get that out of the curb because he has to submit it to get his license.
I got it sent in to the state and it takes about three, eight weeks.
Can you hang out for a little bit and then I can sign it?
Yeah, yeah, no problem, yeah, for sure.
B, discussion consideration and possible approval of Big Ben Fire Department fire engine purchase. And the paperwork was given to us at our last board meeting based on a break at Iowa. Per most of my notes, I know that if we did do 70% down. Correct?
90%.
90% down, they would knock 70,000 dollars off the total price, correct?
72,000?
72,000, 70,000.
Get the 90% down?
Correct. Once the chassis comes in, which won't be for a year.
Is really that long a lead time on these things?
Pierce is five years old.
Yeah, Pierce is five years old. And this one here is going to be about two years old right now, they say.
Lacrosse Fire Department actually got a class action lawsuit against Pierce and their distributor in Brookfield saying they purposely doing that.
That's crazy.
Yeah, because there's a lot of departments that need rigs. I mean, we'd have loved to have a Pierce, but between the price and the weight, that's would have been 1.4 million for the same truck.
Really?
Yeah. We had another company in here that we looked at and they couldn't give us the some little things that we needed, they couldn't, they thought they could give us, but then they came back and said, "No, we can't do what you guys want to do on there." And so then Bill got, so our pump service that pump tests our trucks every year. When they're pump testing, Bill was talking to him and he said, "Check this place out. The body is going to be all stainless steel." And so it actually came in way better price. We don't have equipment figured in with this, but it's way better price and it's two years old. So. And, and, I mean, if we ever have damage to it, it's kind of made to, they will keep the specs there and if we call them up and say, "Hey, we got hit on the back end. We need a bumper, we need a side panel," they'll send everything out to the same color match. And alls we have to do is take it apart and put it together again. They're all modules, so I'm sure where there's plumbing and electric involved, we'd have to have somebody qualified to it by.
That stainless is way nicer than the aluminum, which kind of lasts longer. Some of the trucks we have now, I remember when they do.
And everybody here. This, the sales rep that we had has been with the company 30-some years and everybody at the company said they they pay him well, there's no turnover in the company. Everybody's been working there a very long time. And he said anytime you call there, you can talk to the owner firsthand if you want. And so it's very, seems like a very good company. They work more on quality than quantity. And so we were very happy when we sat down with them to look at everything.
Does it have enough storage that you want and everything, the capabilities that you're going to want?
Yeah. Obviously with the different truck types and that, there might be a few limitations on things, but not much. It should have all the storage I've been looking for.
So we're not shorting ourselves for what we need?
Yeah. They'll have pull-out trays and we can do some of that stuff with pull-out trays and.
Could be better organized.
Right.
Where we haven't done that trays now, it's just kind of shelves, they're limited where you can put them.
I know the rollouts in them work amazingly because I've seen the new unit up north and it's.
The ladders will be down at.
Crown up.
Yeah, pretty much chest level.
For sure.
So when you can go to get them off and everything's set up on the truck pretty nice. Right now it appears that it's going to fit in station one here as well, so. And plus if we order now, we get the older emissions. So that's a bonus as well.
Yeah, no more ladder next to us, things that go wrong, stream layered.
I mean, this engine's already outside of NFTA, right?
Yeah. We're at 24 years old now and our other one is 31 years old. So it is outside of the window, but we've been keeping up on the trucks very good with maintenance.
And the mileage.
What's nice about that is still one of the bigger pumps in the county.
This one here is, yeah.
It's got the current engine in it, too, I think.
But if we get into this new engine here now, we will get it with the old style motor in there. If you got the new style motor here, you look at it, it's 70 grand more.
Just for more.
Get it for the order.
Actually 75 to 90,000 instead of 70,000.
Because then you have to go up 150 horse to make up for your emissions.
Are they getting rid of all those emissions anyhow?
Not, the emission ones? The only one that gets way over is military, not emission. Well, hopefully, I think the bank is working on that. But until it happens, stuck with it.
Do we know any of the salaries around that kind of one somewhere?
Any other municipalities that have one?
Um, not close by, I don't believe. He did tell us where they were from, but I don't remember.
I think, I think it was more of a mortgage because obviously they're a little cost, they don't have pocket budgets to throw up one million dollars of for nature.
When I did research on it, there in North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, Florida, California. Correct. Very good reviews from what I could see. And my dad being on the department for 42 years, I talked to him about it as well, just to get his two cents because he's been doing this for a long time. And they were actually, if they're an old department, we're looking at one as well. Same style with the rollouts and everything and he just wanted to make sure that everybody had the right storage and capabilities that we need for the community. And that was the biggest thing that he wanted to make sure you guys had.
Yeah.
For his input. And he said the price was amazing compared to what price, or Pierce would be charging.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Everybody wants Pierce, you know, because it's the name.
It's a Pierce, yeah.
We're going to get a yellow.
Pierce, go to the.
Double the school bus, make some money.
So when would the first payment be due then?
A year from now.
That's why they want the 90% down?
For us to save the 75,000 dollars?
We talked to the main, sorry, understanding what kind of rate we get?
Yeah, it would all depend. It's probably, it's going to probably be to the village's benefit that it gets that a year lead time because interest rates, hopefully, coming down and everything else that we would be able to do that out and we'd be a choice of looking at either doing a conventional 20 or a common 20 on both pieces of apparatus.
And I know you said so far you have the 25,000 and the 2% dues.
Correct. 45,000.
45.
Yeah, 45,000. Hopefully get about 60 from the association in regards to everything for this, which would knock it roughly down to right around 600. So for that, for what we would be looking at for other companies and stuff, well over 1.2, 1.2 to 1.3.
Cause 1.5 right now, it's amazing.
And then you sell the old engine then?
Yeah, and then anything that we would get for the old engine and that would go right to this as well, so. Probably be about 10 to 20,000 if that.
So we look at any opportunities?
We've looked at a lot of used different opportunities. And price-wise and stuff for where we're at for this one, we'd be paying for something that's about two to five years old, so.
And usually anything used, the municipal, like a bigger city, that's going to be used.
And usually, yeah, and usually the mileage is anywhere from 80,000 to 110,000 miles.
We got this information from the engineer we're looking at now. I asked him about the usuals also. And he does services from, may have from Minnesota, Wisconsin and so forth. And he says that you know, if you buy usually they're going to be cheaper, but usually there's a lot of problems come with it. That they had that you don't know that you're going to get. Because that's usually why they sell. Because right now being a shortage, you get a new engine and so forth, people are hanging on to them. And if they're not good, then they're going to sell. They're going to have that.
And they want a premium.
And they want a premium price for it.
And one of the benefits also for this truck is the way they plant it. If we have to change a valve or anything like that on trucks that we have now and some of the other trucks, it can be a three-day process trying to get up in there and take stuff apart and have somebody crawl in there and take a valve out. On this truck, it's all set up, so it's very easy to get at them.
Easy serviceability.
Yeah, so instead of that, two or three-day service, it'll be, should be same day and they should be able to get it done.
I can even sit in there.
And then this includes that 20,000 dollar contingency too? Do they deliver it then as well or?
We would probably have to go there. I, they'll probably deliver it up, but we'll have to go there and probably do the final inspections and probably along the way take a trip or two down there to, you know, look at the progress and just make sure it's.
What we asked.
What we asked for.
What are you budgeting for outfitting it afterwards?
Right now we can take quite a bit of stuff off our other engines. We might have to get some hose. We'd like to get a new set of jaws on there, but we do have a set that will work in the meantime until we get the electric ones. So really, equipment-wise, it should be very minimum right now besides hose.
If somebody, you can get a grant also.
Other grants available for helping buy new ones right now or? Not really.
Not really.
Right now the grants are kind of, what do you want to say, out in the air?
Out in the air.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything back from the one grant AFG did a plan for?
AFG was put on hold back in February. Grant funding and everything else with the federal government, all of that was all put on hold. Lot of applications and stuff in regards, and this kind of is a good thing in regards to the SCBA's that we purchased from, you want to know? And that, so. We'll see what happens over the next several months in regards to that, but they were supposed to have everything handed out by the end of September and they haven't issued one yet. And FEMA's not talking about anything right now, so. But we've been looking around at a lot of different grants, but a lot of the federal grants right now are on hold.
Is getting one of these more important than the other or are they both equally as important, like the ambulants and the fire engine?
The ambulance, right now our newest one is 2010.
Correct.
And the backup one is, what is that?
2003.
Three, yeah. Yeah, so the backup one's getting, it's still running good, but it's getting a lot of rust and, you know.
A lot of maintenance issues coming up. Keeping our fingers crossed that we pass state inspection with that one.
With the backup one, you're saying?
Yeah.
That's the one we got from New Braun, right?
Yeah.
That's the one we got because from City of New Braun, so it was used heavily before we got it.
Lead, lead Ambrose 15 years old right now. I know the department does a great job on maintenance and everything else, trying to keep everything in swing.
Well, and I know this is, we're not to it yet, but what's the lead time on that?
About two years as well, two and a half years.
So by the time we get it, we pretty really need it probably.
Because then you're looking at replacing an ambulance right now that's 22 years old. By then it'll be 20, almost 25 years old.
Yeah, I know. Some departments already have one ordered from there and it was supposed to be here in January and they still don't have them yet, so. I don't know. The lead time may go out a little further on that too.
But it all depends. And that we wouldn't have to worry about any type of payment until the unit actually comes in.
And I know it's a silly question, this is nothing that we have, a big purchase like this is nothing we have to have referendum or anything like that for because.
So we have one full year to get the 90% down.
You plan just by way, like most of it, probably, right? Except for a little bit that we.
We should be able to incorporate into the budget. It's a lot of big sales. Lot more fish fries and.
Few more rodeos you have?
Few more rodeos and buckles.
And if that's going to be the key, you know, just trying to offset the payment, you know, so that we don't impact the taxpayer as much as possible. Because this is, I mean, it's a big spend, million dollars all in, you know, roughly.
And if we don't do it, then we run the risk of having an engine out of service, an ambulance out of service, which could delay our lead time. First part of this time, sorry.
Prices are not as.
And it keeps going up.
Well, that's the whole thing. Would these prices be locked in then, once we sign them?
Yeah.
Pierce has had twice a year increases right now.
You don't want to get into failing the state inspection or something and then.
Tie it down to one, one truck.
Well, this certainly sounds like a necessary evil.
It would be progressive, at least then we'd be able to budget properly. And it would be a major hit on everything in one shot, we'd be able to stagger.
And you do have a good chunk of change to put towards it right away as well, not just Pierce 20,000 dollars is collected toward it. We could work on it to get it towards that.
All right, we'll figure a reservation for that.
We would figure it, dress up, build it up on the corner and put a sign.
Fireman calendar, all over, all month.
I ain't using my name in.
I got such a duty.
I'm not using my name. You could call it captain.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a fire engine for the Big Ben Fire Department.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstained.
Stayed noted. Motion carries. C, discussion consideration possible approval of the Big Ben Fire Department ambulance purchase from Foster Coach Sales in Monro. Chassis basis is showing 333,761. Allow for graphics is 6,500. Power load install and transfer, which the customer's supplying is 1,700. And the striker floor plate for install for the standard blowaway cut is 989 for a total of 342,950. Does this include contingency ever gone by accident for the last?
Yes. Yeah. About a $10,000.
Do we have to equip this as well or isn't it come pretty well equipped?
Pretty, comes pretty well equipped. The only thing that the department will be looking at is getting the power load cut, which saves everybody's back and injuries and.
Which is what we just got for.
Correct. Fire department currently has at least $11,000 in credit with the company. And that through our last grant that we did, where we got $135,000. And that grant. So we've been saving up that. Our current EMS fund is right around 25, $29,000 that we have available to us for that, so. We'll be able to hit the power load cut for the, for the, what do you call, through that and be able to save up for that. Right now it's just a matter of the equipment. Everything that's on the current ambulance will be able to be transferred over. Just some minor things we end up updating and purchasing, but we've been doing real good with getting grant money to supplement equipment and everything else. We would not be, need a 12 lead monitor, we just went through the 12 lead monitor out of the ambulances and just do swapping around with equipment and stuff, but we can, pretty much everything that's on there. We would just transfer it.
And we're pretty confident about the finances on that, or we should spread these out a little bit more than each other?
Yeah, because of the delay in payments and stuff, we would be able to stagger things out.
And this is two, two and a half years as well?
About, yeah, about, about 30 months.
And we don't make, we don't have to pay until we get delivered?
Correct.
Does that weigh money down or anything or?
It has the option. If we don't like the unit that they make, we can say no.
Really?
And that does happen from time to time, especially with municipalities where something happens where we say, "Hey, we can't do this now." They'll sell it. And we've tried looking at those type of ambulances and that, trying to get our hands on something, it's just, it's hard. Just the way in regards, I mean, you look at how much it costs for new vehicles and stuff nowadays and that, you know, just personal vehicles, it's unbelievable. And it just, these prices just keep going up and up and up, so.
Well, even that one that we were looking at, just looking at, Wisconsin Surplus ended up going for what, over 200 and some thousand dollars?
That was.
Very used. It was a very nice machine.
It was a nice ambulance, but it brought a lot of money.
But there was some issues with it and like you said, you're buying used and we kind of questioned in regards to that when we got to visit. Well, they're getting rid of, they have an older ambulance and, but they're getting rid of the newer ambulance and it just, something just did not seem right with that, so. It's like, I don't know. I mean, if you're looking at it from a municipal standpoint, you would keep the newer one and get rid of the older one.
Good thing. But these, these wouldn't be tied together or were they or would they be separate?
Separate, but eventually tied together, so.
There's no opportunity of the discount or anything like that we completed with the purchase?
There's a lot of cookie cutters out there, but you pay for what we're basically paying for it to. Something that is there that is just, yeah, it's due, but it, it's made on the cheap side and down there you end up having more problems. We see a lot of those type of ambulances out there on the out on the used market and stuff, because we have looked hot and heavy for the past year and a half at used ambulances and trying to come up with something and just, it's just not working.
What are the, what are the terms would you, for something like? What are the, what are the terms when you, for something like, like this for, for the loan from the bank? Ten years, fifteen, twenty years old?
You'd be looking at twenty years, just you, I mean, the equipment you're keeping now, municipalities are keeping are basically twenty to thirty years. I mean, it's obvious without us, you've got an engine that's thirty-one years old, another one that's twenty, you know, twenty-four years old. Ambulance that's fifteen, another ambulance that's, you know, twenty-four, or, I'm sorry, twenty-two. So spreading the payments out that far, then you're basically capturing that you and I are paying for it throughout the years, but also the other, you know, people, the future people would be, you know, into that. But you want to try paying this stuff off as quickly as possible, but of course, you know, you don't want end up, what do you call it, it depends on how much fundraising and grant writing we do and everything else. And there's money to be had out there, it's just a matter of.
Going and getting it.
Going and getting it. And there's a lot of competition for it. Fortunately, being a smaller department, you don't have the people like in a full-time department that, you know, from the major cities and stuff that are always writing.
How many miles a year do you have in an ambulance?
Depends on the, on what.
What kind of, it's like forty, fifty?
No, not that much, right around twenty, fifteen, depending on how many dollars you get through here. Because you've got to remember, you're just going to local and not to the hospitals, so average run is about thirty miles on train. Into Milwaukee, it'll be about forty-five to fifty.
So it shouldn't last a long time?
Yes. And some departments with their engines, they're taking their engines to ambulance calls and stuff, but, you know, some municipalities don't, and we're one of them, that doesn't. Like unnecessary miles on that engine.
I guess if something has to be done sooner than later, or it'd be paid?
We'll be paying for it in two years.
Later.
So we have two years worth of budget to give and wanting to help.
Well, I'll make a motion then to approve the, the purchase of a new ambulance.
I'll second that.
As discussed.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Call abstained.
Motion carried. Next meeting is set for Thursday, October fifth at seven P M.
Make motion to adjourn.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.